Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome you to Prattville City Council, Tuesday, April 5th, 2016, City Council meeting. We ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and American Flag and remain standing for invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Let us pray. O grace is God, we come as honored as we know how. Lord, we want to say thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us. We thank you, oh Lord, for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. We ask that you be with us, oh Lord, this night as we deliberate to bid this other city. Now, Lord, we're not selfish this night in our prayers. We pray for those who are less fortunate than we are, those who are sick and shut in, those who are bereaved at this time. Pray for our men and women fighting in harm's way. Be with them blessed and protect them, and be with their families. Now, Lord, when we depart from here tonight, we ask that you protect us and allow us to arrive safely to our destination. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
We call this Prattville City Council, Tuesday, April 5th, 2016, meeting to order. Character trait of money is forgiveness, releasing feelings of resentment. A good character trait, forgiveness. This time we have approval of minutes. Public hearing in the City Council meeting, March 15th, 2016. Have a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes, signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone wish to speak on an item on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am, please.
John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace, I'm coming before you regarding Resolution Number Five, and the only question I have on that, because I know the railroad bridge and the road is basically a done deal, I am a little bit worried about the non-competitive bid, and I understand that the Code of Alabama allows this, and I appeared before you just six months ago, and I had questioned four items on that agenda, and asked about the non-competitive bid, and Counselor Brown responded, and I agree that, you know, the cheapest is not necessarily always the best. However, since that time, there's been several more, and tonight's one is in the amount of $254,224. And I just hope that you take into consideration, there's got to be other companies. I have nothing against Sane Associates at all, I know they're very experienced, et cetera, but I just think that because of the costs we are incurring, excuse me, not only the railroad bridge, we're starting the sewer project, the public safety building that will be coming in to play, I just think that maybe there should be an effort to search for competitive bids, or make competitive bids.
Okay. Be anything else, Ms. Finnegan.
That's it.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Finnegan? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? May I have your report?
Yes, sir, if I might ask for a point of privilege.
Yes, sir.
As for Assistant Chief, Sergeant Toussillon, to come forward. It's my honor, my privilege to announce these gentlemen to you. Mitch and Ernest, Lieutenant, I have a little difficulty pronouncing his last name. If you could help me out.
Bowles.
Ron, okay, Bowles. And Sergeant Toussillon. Great-looking family, both sides there. These men have been through the promotional process, and have come out on the good side of that, and I want to thank them for all their hard work and dedication to this city, to this community, and we have some nice, shiny brass right here for our lieutenant. Make sure you put that pin out, too. I wore my vest just so he could. He did? Thank you. I'll just hand it up to you like it's over there. What else does he have to do? He's got a pocket full of stuff there. Well, you've earned each and every one of those, so I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
And that's that. Thank you. Sergeant Toussillon, I just put three hundred cents in there. Thanks, bro.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. But at this point in time, anybody want to say anything? Press the council.
I will tell you all this, I'm on third shift now, and I've been on first shift for, I guess, two years, and Councilmember Boone came to us the other night, and I really did appreciate that, the officers appreciated it, and what I told her was, "We appreciate y'all. We really, really appreciate the equipment y'all are giving us." It's, I worked first, third shift for about five years, a couple of years ago, and the vehicles that we had, you literally couldn't see. You're driving through neighborhoods at two, three o'clock in the morning, and a lot of people don't understand what an officer does, we look side to side, and with these new vehicles that y'all are getting, we can actually see it's safer for us, and I know, I can speak for the officers, we appreciate it, and we're going to respect it, we're not going to tear these vehicles up, and I do appreciate all y'all have done for us, and we've seen it over the years, and I want to say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
And I appreciate everything y'all have done for us, too. Thank you very much.
Well, did I butcher your name up there?
Yeah, he said it was.
I said it. Well, I also want to quick your families, because I know there's a sacrifice from your end, but also from there, and also, so thank you for that, thank you for my hard work, and just give them a round of applause. Georgia. Georgia, come on. And if we can't have one more with Assistant Chief Ham, and you too, without the families?
Oh, wow, Captain.
Captain. Should we put the band around here another?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations for that. Later, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. I know, like I said, a lot of hard work there. A lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, and I just really appreciate all of that, and it started a long time ago, not only for them, but Chief Thompson has done a great job, HR has worked tirelessly to get this promotional and hiring policies in place, and in my humble opinion, it has really been paying off. I think our police department is, can stand nose to toes with any other police department in the country, in the world. But moving right on along, Mr. President, we had a great turnout for the Arts Festival this past weekend, even though reports are that we received between four and six inches of rain the night or so before. I want to thank Barbara Simpson and Brittany Glenn for all their hard work, along with Kelly Cook and all of our Arts Council volunteers. So also want to thank all departments who were out and about during this rain event. I know we had several of our first responders, had some of our engineers, some of our public works people were out and about in it while we were inside safe and warm with our families. But some of these same individuals and departments were, because of their dedication, hard work, make this city look great, and allow us to go about our daily lives with very little change when we do have an event like the other night. But also want to thank this council for supporting and locating the funding for the three Ts, because without the time, the tools, and the talent, we would not progress to the degree that we have. We have been, we have much to be thankful for, and with that said, please anticipate that Jackson Thornton will discuss the audit at our next council meeting, reveal some of the advancements that we've been able to make. Opening day for girls softball was rescheduled, and is this Saturday, April 9th, at 9:00 a.m. at Newton Park. I hope you all join me there to kick off the season, or first toss of the season for girls softball. On the agenda tonight, we were honored that the State Bicentennial Commission chose Prattville for its first information session last week, and on the consent agenda is a resolution to support this effort. We'll hold our first Ataga Prattville Local Events Meeting on April 28th, and we encourage anyone to contact Trace Lee in my office to get involved. The community quarrels will hold their spring dinner concert on April 14th and 15th, and I hope to see everybody there. Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have any questions or comment for the mayor at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we have reports on special committees. Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. The Public Safety Committee met on March 25th at 4:00 p.m. Chief Mark Thompson updated the committee on the public safety building. He said it will be the state-of-art building for the fire, police, and EMA personnel. He also presented that to begin a neighborhood watch, simply contact Chief Mark Thompson or the police department, and they would direct the citizens to the proper officer to begin the program within the neighborhood. Then the committee was updated with the status of the cars, and he also announced that Police and Fire Citizens Academy will begin April 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whiteside.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir. IT Committee met Thursday, October, October, I'm really wanting this session to get over with. Thursday, the 31st, on Resolution Number Two, we ask that y'all move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. The Parks and Rec meeting was April the 21st, and we discussed the safety in our parks facilities with some issues towards safety and improvements to Cooters Pond and some future budget ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into our agenda. We do have a consent agenda to consider tonight. We have five items on the consent agenda to consider. Number one is a resolution to surplus equipment from the wastewater department. Number two is resolution to surplus two vehicles and various equipment from the police department. Number three is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance in order near abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 as amendment. Number four is a resolution to endorse and support the FSO, the Alabama Bicentennial Commission. And number five is to authorize the mayor to submit an application to the National Resources Conversation Service for Emergency Watershare Protection Program Funds for repair of the drainage ditch located behind Merrill Court. We have a motion to place these five items on a consent agenda.
Much.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We're being in discussion on placing these items on a consent agenda. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And this is adopted. Now, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We're being in discussion on either one of these five items. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and the consent agenda has been adopted. Next item is an ordinance to exempt certain covered items from the municipal sales and use tax during the first four weekend of August 2016, as authorized by Act 2006-574, generally referred to as the Back-to-School Sales Tax Holiday. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows. Section One, in conformity with the provisions of the Sales Tax Holiday Rule 810-6-3-65 and Section 11-51-210E, Code of Alabama 1975, is amended, enacted by the Alabama Legislature during the 2006 Regular Session, providing for a state sales tax holiday, the City of Prattville, Alabama exempts covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the same period, beginning at 12:01 a.m. on the first Friday in August, August the 5th, 2016, and ending at 12:00 midnight the following Sunday, August the 7th, 2016. Section Two, this ordinance shall be subject to all terms, conditions, definitions, time periods, and rules as provided by the Sales Tax Holiday Rule 810-6-3-65 and Section 11-51-210E, Code of Alabama 1975, is amended, except that the time period shall only be as specified in Section One above, and not for all years thereafter. Section Three, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to certify a copy of this ordinance under the seal of the City of Prattville, Alabama, and to forward said certified copy to the Alabama Department of Revenue to be recorded and posted on the department website. Section Four, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication as required by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance, the rules must be suspended unanimously in order to be considered tonight, do we have a motion to suspend rules?
So moved.
We have a motion to suspend, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by raising your right hand. And the rules have now been suspended. Will there be any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of adoption of the ordinance, signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Our next item is a resolution to amend the budget and to release funds for the purchase of one direct attached storage unit from Dell through state contract T531 for the Information Technology Department at a cost not to exceed $12,454. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one direct attached storage unit for, unit in the Information Technology Department, and whereas said unit is available from Dell through state contract T531 at a cost not to exceed $12,454, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the FY 2016 reserve are hereby decreased by $12,454, and the FY 2016 budget line item, Information Technology Department slash capital outlay is hereby increased $12,454. Be it therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed $12,454 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Dell for said unit, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2016 budget line item, Information Technology Department slash capital outlay. I so move.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Next item is a resolution to amend the budget and to release funds in the amount of $11,724 for the City of Prattville's local match share of the MPO FY 2016 Unified Planning and Work Program Planning Funds. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville is a member of the Montgomery Metropolitan Planning Organization, and whereas the MPO has approved a cost-sharing agreement based on percentage of population for the fiscal year 2016 Unified Planning and Work Program Planning Funds, and whereas the City of Prattville's local match share for the fiscal year 2016 UPWP Transportation Planning Activities is $11,724, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that FY 2016 reserves are hereby decreased by $11,724, and fiscal year 2016 budget line item Planning Department Professional Services is hereby increased by $11,724. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in the amount not to exceed $11,724 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to City of Montgomery Department of Finance for said cost-sharing agreement, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2016 Budget Line Item Planning Department Professional Services. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Next item is resolution to authorize the mayor to send an application to ADM for Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Project Number CS010259-09, for restoration of Woodvale Drainage Canal at an estimated cost of $446,000, including engineering costs, net cost to the city $223,000. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville, Alabama has identified a need to restore the Woodvale Drainage Canal, and whereas Section 22-34-1 at Secu, Code of Alabama 1975, is amended, and Regulations in ADM Administrative Code, Chapter 335, 11-1 authorize the making of loans to aid in financing the cost of construction of necessary wastewater, stormwater treatment, and whereas the Woodvale Drainage Canal Restoration Project is an eligible project, and whereas the city desires to retain engineering services for said project in the event the application is approved, whereas Section 41-1651A3, Code of Alabama 1975, is amended, allows contracts to secure services with consultants possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding, whereas the city shall seek reimbursement of CWSRF funds for all necessary engineering fees paid from city funds in the event of the application is approved, and whereas said project shall be a budgeted expenditure for the Engineering Department in fiscal year 2017. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville as follows. Number one, that Mayor Bill Gillespie Jr. is hereby authorized to file an application for loan to be made by the Alabama Water Pollution Control Authority on behalf of the City of Prattville. Number two, that Mayor Bill Gillespie Jr. is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the City of Prattville, and is authorized to file all necessary documents required by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, ADM, in connection with its application. Number three, that certified copies of the resolution will be included as part of the application to be submitted to the department. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number five is resolution to authorize the mayor into agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to provide engineering services for the road and bridge project in South Industrial Park in an amount not to exceed $254,224. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville entered into a development agreement with the Ataga County Commission for Improvements to the South Industrial Park in Resolution Book 2016, page 40, on February 16, 2016, and whereas said improvements include construction of a road and bridge, and whereas Sane Associates Incorporated has the ability to provide engineering services for said project at a cost not to exceed $254,224, and whereas Section 41-16-51A3, Code of Alabama 1975, is amended, allows contracts to secure services with engineers possessing a high degree of professional skill to be let without competitive bidding, and whereas said projects are a budgeted expense of the Capital Projects Fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated for said engineering services at a cost not to exceed $254,224, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2016 Capital Projects Fund Miscellaneous Contract Services. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will there be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. That concludes our agenda for tonight. This time we have comments from persons present. If you'd like to make comment on any other item, please raise your hand. Yes, sir, in the back, behind, right with the pad in your hand. Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eddie Barnes. I reside at 762 Staple Ford Trail in Highland Ridge, Prattville. If I may proceed, I would like to thank you also for allowing me to come up and talk this afternoon, this evening, and I would also like to just read my, I have a proposal for the council, and I would like to read that proposal, and then maybe a little explanation afterward, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Per the standards established by the Prattville Alabama Code of Ordinance, Chapter 54, in general, street sidewalks and other public places, Article One, Section 54, Tac Two, maintenance of sidewalks, driveways, et cetera, by property owners or occupants. Highland Ridge Homeowners Association requests the following proposed changes to said name ordinance on behalf of the homeowners of the Highland Ridge Community and City of Prattville. Highland Ridge encompasses three separate districts within the Prattville city limits. On behalf of the residents of Highland Ridge, it is requested that the city council persons, Denise B. Brown of District Three, Jerry Starnes of District Four, and Gary L. Whiteside, I hope I got that right, of District Five, prepare and bring this proposal up for approval by the city council and the mayor of the City of Prattville. The current ordinance and the proposed changes are as follows. Section 54, Tac Two, maintenance of sidewalks, driveways, et cetera, by property owners or occupants. Current ordinance, it shall be, current ordinance reads as follows. It shall be the duty and obligation of all owners, occupants, and users of real property within the corporate limits of the city upon which property, a public sidewalk, driveway, or other way abuts, to keep and maintain such sidewalk, driveway, or way in a safe condition for use. Such sidewalks, driveways, or ways shall be maintained so as to be free of depressions, excavations, inequalities, obstacles, obstructions, or encroachments by the owner or occupants of such real property. Our proposed change to that ordinance reads as follows. It shall be the duty and obligation of the city to maintain and repair all city sidewalks abutted against homeowners' real property. Homeowners are responsible for maintenance and repair of their personal driveways and ways. Such portions of sidewalks, driveways, and ways shall be maintained by each responsible party in a safe condition so as to be free of depressions, excavations, inequalities, obstacles, and obstructions. Section 54 of that ordinance, Subparagraph B, reads as follows. It shall be the duty and obligation of the owner and occupants of any property abutted upon any defective, unsafe, or hazardous sidewalk, parkway, way, or driveway to repair the same at such owners' or occupants' expense. The proposed change by Highland Ridge reads as follows to that, to Section B. It shall be the duty and obligations of the city and the homeowner of such defects to repair responsible areas of defects at their own expense. Also, within 52, Tac Two, there's a subparagraph C. Subparagraph C reads as follows. If any injury or damage occasioned or suffered or inflicted upon any person by reason of the violation of the provisions of this section, primary liability for any loss or damage shall be upon the owner, occupant, or user of such property. Highland Ridge proposed change to that ordinance reads as follows. If any injury or damage is occasioned or suffered or inflicted upon any person by reason of the violation of the provisions of this section, primary liability for any loss or damage shall be upon either negligence of the user, the city, the city, or homeowners in each respective area of responsibility. That concludes my portion of it. I'd like to do a little explanation if I may, just verbally here. In Highland Ridge, as of this point, we have drainage, the drainage, the drains, they have rebocks sticking out. Our concern right now is we have young kids out there in that vicinity, they're going to get hurt, all right, and there's quite a few of those there. Now, I do want to say this, we've been working with, with the, I forget his name, across, Joe, across the street, and he's been helping, he's been following through on some things, all right, but there's a, when I go to the homeowners association, which I will this Thursday, this is a subject that continues to come up, and they have a legitimate complaint. Our question to the city is this. As of this moment right now, I am a homeowner. If someone walked down my sidewalk and hurt themselves, then I'm responsible as a homeowner. I don't own the sidewalk. That's an easement, that is a right-of-way owned by the city, right? So therefore, I don't, I shouldn't be responsible for that. However, if you want me to be responsible, then I don't want to, I don't want to see it there. I want to dig it up and do what I want to do with it, if you're going to make me responsible, right? But I don't think that's going to happen because it's yours, it's ours, I should say, I shouldn't say yours. Ours as a whole, as a city, right? It belongs to the city as a right-of-way. So we feel that if it's a right-of-way by the city, then the city should be responsible. For those driveways and ways that are coming into, that we pull up in and out... For those driveways and ways that are coming into, that we pull up in and out, that is my responsibility as a homeowner, and we have no problem with that. But the way the ordinance reads today, all the responsibility goes on the homeowner. And to include, which is an issue from a real estate perspective, it includes the tenant as well, if you're renting your property to someone. So for me, when the word get around and say that's gonna happen to a tenant, if I decide to rent my property, nobody's gonna rent my property, word's gonna get around. That, that's an issue with that. So we're just requesting that you consider this proposal, look at it, and get back with us so we can let our tenants know where we stand with this. Anybody have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Barnes? Yes, sir, Councilor Boles.
Do you mind giving a copy of that to our city clerk?
I sure will.
Will you leave?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Barnes, I just want to say thanks for bringing that to our attention. If you would, just email me a copy of that, and I'll be at the association meeting Thursday night.
Okay, you should already have a copy. I think Ms. Brown already got one, right? You didn't? Well, I'll send you a note.
Yeah, and I never go, I never go to cop ahead.
I'll send you one too.
But yeah, I appreciate getting one.
Yes, but I will give the clerk a copy of this, okay? And again, I really appreciate you giving me a time to come up and talk about this this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Stan Boyson, eighteen sixty Sanford Drive, corner of McQueen Smith and Sanford Drive. I just want to apologize first for taking three, four months to get up here. And this is concerning rerouting the big trucks off of McQueen Smith Road. I believe Counselor Brown headed up the committee. I've talked to Mr. Whiteside and the mayor a few times about it, but I just want to tell you, we really appreciate getting the big trucks rerouted out of our neighborhood. And we keep, we got more apartments coming up, and the traffic's getting heavier and heavier. But I just want to tell you all, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments from Mr. Washington?
One of the trash get picked up? Does the trash get picked up?
I knew if I sent you a picture of it, it'd get picked up. I appreciate it. I got one other little thing, too, concerning the police department. My wife had a little incident about two weeks ago where somebody came up, knocked on the door, tried to get her to come outside, although she didn't go outside. And she shut the door, went and got her pistol, called me, and I told her to call the police. Before she could get off the phone with the operator at the police, Captain Hassel was pulling up the driveway, and they came in and did a sweep of the neighborhood, looking for the people. You know, they might have been legit, he was trying to get her out, identify a dog, because the dog wouldn't come to him. But there was another guy in the car, and he was at our door. And soon as she shut the door, the dog came up to the guy. So she got a partial tag number and a good ID, and the police just come and swept the neighborhood, but they were long gone. But I just want to tell you, I appreciate it, and as always, the police department and all the city services are great here.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Boyett, I live on Smith Avenue, up by the mini school. And I'm just here to ask you guys if you could in some way help us get control of the speed on Smith Avenue. It's getting way, it's been out of hand for a while, but it's getting dangerous now. A lot of elderly people there that are scared across the road. Folks come off of thirty-one, they make that sweep through there and never slow down. They're running forty-five, and I've seen them forty-five and fifty down Smith Avenue, which is twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And I'm just here to see if you guys can help us in any way, in enforcement with the police department. I put a suggestion out a couple of times, put a stop sign at Davis and Smith, that would break their speed. We need some help if we can to slow them down.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone? Councilor Boles?
Mr. Boyett, I know we've had numerous, numerous talks about this. Mr. Anderson, didn't we buy a Speed Island? Could we put that on Smith? Where's that Speed Island placed? Couple of place. You put one for, at the Chevrolet place? Would, would a Speed Island help on Smith? Do you mind doing that for me? Ms. Ham? If you don't mind, get the, the little box up again, saying how fast we're going? All right, thank you. Thank you.
One other quick one?
Yes, sir.
The lady that lives down right by Davis, her daughter lives up behind the skating rink. And they were having the same issue up there with folks cutting the druthers, flying it.
That's right.
They put in three stop signs, she said. Curated a problem. So they don't have any more speakers do they?
That's right.
But you gotta enforce the stop signs, too.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Richard Harrison. I live on one twenty-one Irma Lane. It's on the corner of Genie and Irma, right off Sheila Boulevard and J Street. Saturday morning on the second, there was a run. And I have no problem with people having to run a marathon, whatever it may be. However, we were all woken up in my little area, in that little corner, around seven o'clock in the morning with a bunch of screaming and air horns and car horns going off. People, like I said, we had no problem with people running and having marathons, but they had the one-mile marker at this marathon right there in our residential area. We have some elderly people, myself, we have a terminally ill person right across the road from me, and we didn't really appreciate getting woken up that early in the morning. We tried to be quiet and leave alone, and they didn't want to be quiet. But it ended up, police was called, and the police said they could not do anything about it because there was a special events permit given. And the special events permit overrides the noise ordinance in the city. And I don't see, if that, if that's the case, maybe we need to fix that. If the run is later, or if they just be quiet and just let the runners run, we have no problem. But that seemed to be the only area, there's a bunch of people with fog horns. We got woke up early in the morning, we didn't appreciate that. Is that, is that true? Is there not a, does a special permit override? The noise permit?
Sir, I don't know if anyone can answer that, but you can get with the mayor, maybe you can answer it now, or you can get with the mayor's office, and we don't have those ordinances up here before.
See, I tried to call yesterday, I spent yesterday calling, I called the special events people, and they say they don't give out the permits. I don't, so I tried calling several different departments yesterday and could not get any answers. So that's why I decided to come here tonight and ask if we can just get help in that area and just not be woken up that early in the morning on a run. Run didn't bother nobody. We don't mind stopping for the traffic, letting people walk by. We just appreciate getting woken up that early. The fog horns, and we're being told nothing to do, be done about it.
Again, just let me suggest that you get with the administration, which is the mayor's office. Give them your name and address. Once you go by, you can give it to them now on your way out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
I have a question. Is the only issue the fog horn, or is it the people cheering? I mean, is there an issue with the cheering?
They were screaming too. I don't mind, like I said, they was screaming at the top of their lungs. And when you got about fifteen or twenty people screaming outside your bedroom window, that, it was a problem, too. And there was points all in the neighborhood where, where people might have been standing watered, cops were directing traffic and stuff like that, and that wasn't any problem. Because I walked around the neighborhood to see if the other intersections were having the same problem, and it wasn't. It was just ours because it was sort of one-mile left mark. And they were cutting through our street and going through the park and around to Daniel Pratt to the Y. So the other, the other intersections wasn't a problem, it was just that one intersection. Yes, it was screaming, but it was also air horns and a couple of car horns also.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, I talked to the-
Can we get some order on the council, please? And speaking to you, Mike, please, please ask to be recognized so we won't speak to it. Councilor Brown, please turn your mic on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We got, I got complaints about traffic, about people being blocked in, they couldn't get out. Somebody with a boat that was trying to get out of their driveway and didn't have enough clearance to get out. So I don't know, I don't know the route because I haven't been involved with it, but maybe we need to look at that for next year.
Thank you. Councilor Whiteside?
Yeah. Well, now, when I actually talked to the people who put the vent together, and this was the biggest one they've ever had. So I think they did have some problems. The boat, I actually went down and looked at the boat, and they just had some people parking where they shouldn't park. And they're gonna do better, they're probably almost outgrowing their venue there because the route's got so big. But they're gonna do a better job next year. We're gonna talk to them. And we can tell them these things, and they're more than willing to just bend over backwards to, to make things right for everybody.
Right. And the, and the traffic, well, I don't have, I didn't have a boat getting out, but I was able to get out. It was tough, but I was able to get out. If I'd have had a trailer, I wouldn't have been able to get out in my yard. But I could see that was also a problem. It's not the one my little area had, but it was making a noise with us.
Mayor, you want to speak to this issue right now?
Yes, if you don't mind, and if you don't mind, we'll step right out here in just a moment, and I'll get a little more information from you. But long-term planning, I guess it's sort of a good problem to have. It's a little bit like having a parking problem downtown. You know that things are growing and going whenever you do have a parking problem. And we have seen some other complaints along this line. And working with our parks and recs, one of the things we're looking for long-term wise is actually have a little more of a rule setting for some of these five Ks and these marathons and so forth. Because there are very big fundraisers for churches and other community activities there, but we're actually hoping we're gonna get some kind of track available, some kind of pathway available in the very near future. We can recommend these different entities to be able to pick and choose from during these fund runs. But we do, the chief of police and myself do approve, sign off on these permits, and I will get with him to see exactly some of the do's and don'ts, what we need to tighten up on. But again, do thank you for coming down and Ken beats you right up in the hallway here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Finnegan?
John Lee Finnegan, two eleven Deer Trace. I came before you on two sixteen about this situation and found out that the, the meeting was not video, it was inadvertently not turned on. And what it is, it's again about the garbage cans. And back in December, you approved the purchase of five hundred and forty-nine, and on March first, you approved the purchase of five hundred and forty-one, so that's a thousand ninety. And I'm not against the dual system if people want it. I personally do not want it because I don't generate enough garbage to have to lug a can out. But even since that time, since I came before you, the cans are being left out. There being, in fact, I know on fourteen, there's one that the can is just by a light pole right by the street. They're putting them out early, they're not taking them back in. And also, just the other day, there was a can, and it had two garbage bags on the ground by it and a garbage bag on top of it. So it sort of defeats the purpose of the cans. Because of the color, they're very noticeable. So even the storage of them, you know, people are, some, some people are just putting them in front of their houses. And that's the only thing I wanted it noted. Also, that I had sent, I believe all of you received the one from El Paso, their rules and regulations regarding it. And I really would like you to consider broadening that code so that it includes better enforcement and so people know. So when somebody gets the can, they could actually hand them the piece of paper and say, here's the times, here's what's gonna happen, you know, bring it in, et cetera, et cetera. Also, if I may, I would like the minutes to reflect that I am coming up regarding amending that ordinance and also the enforcement. But I was just, I just kind of looked and I was watching, but the same problem is happening. It's usually the same people. But again, I'm not against the dual system. If people wants the cans, that's fine. But it really doesn't make the city look nice when those cans are left out. And some of the winds we've had and storms, I mean, when they're empty, they, they can blow. And we do have some hilly areas around here, so that's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Is anyone have any questions or comment for Ms. Finnegan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, we have closing comments. Council Striplin?
Yes, sir. Just very briefly. Last Tuesday morning, we had a groundbreaking ceremony which was held for the Public Safety Building. Many individuals were thanked for the role they have played to get this project where it is. Due to an oversight, a very important team player was inadvertently overmitted. Tonight, I apologize to Joel Duke and publicly thank him for his many years of work on this project, which in the eyes of many is just beginning, so, thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Councilor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Sterns?
Yes, sir. I want to recognize Kevin Turner, known as KT. He passed away on March twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, from ALS. He was one of the key players for the state championship in nineteen eighty-four at Prattville High School, and he graduated in nineteen eighty-seven. He went on to play for the University of Alabama and graduated from the University of Alabama, then drafted on to the New England Patriots and then to the Philadelphia Eagles. He was diagnosed with ALS approximately seven years ago. He became a national figure for advocating a cure for ALS. I'm working with the council to recognize Kevin Turner and let his name live on in the City of Prattville. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilor Whiteside? Councilor Boles? Councilor Boone? Mayor, do you have any further comments? Again, I want to take this opportunity, first of all, to thank all of you all who called, sent a card, or contacted me, or even sent up a prayer during the death of my uncle, who was very close to me. I appreciate that very much. And I want to go further to thank all employees for what you do. Thank the council for working diligently with your committees behind closed doors prior to coming to council chambers where you just actually vote, but I know a lot of work is going on with that. Again, thank you all for that. With that being said, our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April nineteenth, six P.M. here in this chamber. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor signify by raising your aye.
Aye.